To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, we thank you for tonight, we thank you for our time together, just fellowship together, Lord, and we just thank you for just this opportunity to be able to serve our wonderful county, we thank you for the wonderful teachers and wonderful students that we're able to serve, the administration, thank you for them, we pray for their safety, Lord, and just their diligence in educating our children. Father, we want to say a special prayer for Ms. Chrissy tonight, Lord, as she continues to go through treatment, Lord, may you just be gracious to her, Father, to just pray for her healing and her body, Father, thank you for Clay, he takes such good care of her, Father, thank you for that wonderful family, and just much love towards them. We just pray this in your son's name and through the Holy Spirit, amen. Before we get started tonight, everybody's here, and we've got two special guests tonight, one from Arlington, Mr. Scott Benjamin, who's Board Chair of the Arlington Board of Education, we've got Mr. Chris Jensen from Millington, he's also the Board Chair, so gentlemen, we thank y'all for being here tonight, and by the way, thanks y'all for doing it. We'll go ahead and take a look at your agenda tonight, if it all looks well to you, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda, and then I got a motion by Mr. Jenkins, do we have a second, a second by Mr. Gray, do we have any discussion on that? No discussion? If all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? That motion passed. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? No additions, good. If not, Dr. Byrd, you want to present our teacher substitution in a moment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we do not have substitutes at the month tonight, but we do have student of the month and teacher of the month, and we will start with student of the month. For our middle school student of the month this month is Mr. Carson Winberry, and he will come up. Okay, so Carson is nominated by Ms. Chrissy Wakefield and Ms. Vicky Lake, two of his teachers, for his cooperation in work ethic, his community involvement, his consideration to others and meeting others in need, outstanding attitude, major improvement in grades, positive role model for other students. Carson is showing consistent improvements in all of his classes this year in 7th grade. He is engaging in classroom discussions more confidently and asking questions for clarification. Carson is a great example of hardworking, excuse me, of hard work resulting in growth, so we want to say congratulations to Carson on being our amazing of the month, so congratulations. I told him he didn't have to speak, because he was like, his dad told him to. Then we also have, this month, we would like to recognize Ms. Erin Scott, who charges our academy, so Ms. Scott will come up. Erin and I had a way back to school, because we graduated together, just like 10 years ago, to the student, too. Erin works and charges our academy, she is the librarian and graciously also teaches 5th grade social studies, so we appreciate that, she's been teaching for 25 years. Ms. Erin Scott consistently goes above and beyond for her students and our learning community. As a librarian and 5th grade social studies teacher, she consistently demonstrates a dedication to her students and a passion for teaching that is truly inspiring. She fosters a classroom environment where students feel safe to take risks and learn from their mistakes. As a lifelong learner, she embraces professional development opportunities to refine her teaching practices and leadership skills. This commitment to growth is a visible asset to our leadership team. In her dedication to improvement instruction, Ms. Scott currently serves our school librarian, as our school librarian, kindergarten and first grade in her ventures as she volunteers in her schedule to teach 5th grade social studies, she volunteers in her schedule, key point there, she does a great job. She mentors to her students during school age childcare as well. Ms. Scott is a true asset to our school community, and I believe she is deserving of this recognition, and we will leave that also, we just want to say thank you for a great job there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Byrd, thank you, Dr. Martin, Blueberries, thank you to Scott, thank y'all so much, appreciate it. Board, we'll take a consent agenda right now, anybody want to pull any items out of the consent agenda? If not, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is, we have a motion by Mr. Edwards, a second by Mr. Yubanks, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion passed. Mr. Kane, you want to give the Policy Committee an update?
Yep, Policy Committee, we met in Annex, 5 o'clock, we had just one policy that was the first reading, it was 6.504, and we reviewed it and approved the changes, mainly just a kind of typo changes all of a sudden.
Okay. Did we, did we take a vote on that last time, did we take a vote on that, Dr. Byrd, for the, did we take a vote on that for the first reading? Is that correct?
For the first reading, and we need to take a reading for the second, motion or the second reading, or 4.501.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. So that was it, just Policy 6.504, what you reviewed, Mr. Kane?
Yep.
Policy Committee was good with it?
Yep.
No issues or anything? Okay. Board, it's in your, it's in your packet, you can see that on your online packet there, 6.504, our students there, does anybody have any discussion on that? If not, we have a motion to approve the first reading of the 6.504.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Kane, a second by Mr. ...
I know what you're like.
I was thinking, I've just blanked out tonight, so, I've been around kids all week, you know, put on sports camp, so I'm thinking, all I can think about is, bring it on me and bring it on me and bring it on me.
So you're one of your teachers, right?
No, absolutely not, no, I'm sorry. All right, so any discussion on that motion, 6.504? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion passed. And Ms. Renee says we need to, second reading of 4.501?
Yes.
Is that correct? So that's in your, that's in your packets as well, 4.501 of school volunteers, this will be our second reading, we have a motion to approve that, motion by Mr. Gray, a second by Mr. Yubanks, any discussion on that, changes or anything, discussion? If not, all in favor of motion for 4.501, say aye. Any opposed? That motion passed. Good. Thank you. Instructional report, Dr. Byrd? Second by Mr. Kane.
Mr. Chair, summer camps, summer learning camps began last Monday, we had approximately 800 students enrolled in our elementary and middle schools in their summer learning camps, and we have about 100 students in our high schools working on credit recovery this summer. Credit recovery will conclude next Friday, and summer learning camps will run through the end of June, that Friday, June 27th will be the final day. And the picture here on the board shows that some of our students during the first week of summer learning camp, and you can see that they, our teachers are doing a great job of keeping our students engaged with hands-on learning, as you can see from these pictures, they're doing reading, focusing on reading, math, and STEM during summer learning camps. One additional administrative change has occurred since our work session last week, Luntford Middle School, the new principal there will be Dr. Corey Concas, he is currently an assistant principal at Otoka Elementary, but he will become the new principal at Luntford Middle effective July 1st. The last thing I have tonight, I want to share with you some information on three of our current students. Yesterday, Dr. Combs and I were able to spend some time with a board member, Mr. Mike Gill, and one of our county commissioners, Michael Navy, and they are supervising and training three Tipton County school students at the Millington Airport on all things aviation. We spent a couple of hours yesterday with Shaw Yubanks, as some of you may know, Drew Greenland and Carter Joyner, and then their principals were also able to join us, but we toured the airport, we learned about all the work that Mr. Gill, Commissioner Navy are doing with our students, and we want to thank Mr. Gill and the Commissioner for providing this opportunity for three of our students. We also have six interns working for Tipton County Schools this summer, we have one in technology, media, human resources, finance, and then we have two students working in the vet science labs at Luntford High and Wrighton High, and we hope to expand that program next year, this is our first year to kind of dabble in interns, and it's going well so far, so we hope with some funding, we hope to increase that number next year. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair, unless someone has questions for me.
Any questions for Dr. Byrd? Dr. Byrd, how many students do we have graduate, which high school do you know?
Total, 723.
723, something like that?
Yes, sir.
Good. What was the summer school number?
Around 800 in elementary and middle schools together, and about 100 in high school credit recovery.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I will say that we offered Chief Navy a trade, I tried to trade him 14 of our buses for that big rig right there in the middle, and he turned me down.
The one in the middle?
The one in the middle, yeah, it's 1.6 million.
Is that his personal head?
1.6 million, yeah, it's got a, it's got a fire cannon on the front.
We got that.
But he turned us down.
Billy says he is.
He turned me down. I said 14 buses straight up.
That would be great, matter of fact, you should have gave us some boot on that.
I'm just saying.
I think the coolest thing was this feature, and I don't know if a regular fire truck is this or not, Mr. Edwards, you might know, it shoots water out from the front onto the flame, we thought that was pretty good.
I would like to just add, this has been a wonderful experience, like, and I hope this is something that continues, all those summer internships, I think it is a great program for our students moving forward, so.
Do you want to tell them about the ones we have now, like how that's going? Oh, okay, gotcha, my bad.
Yeah, Mr. Gill, thank y'all for doing that.
I would say on that one right there, not, not the board going talking right now, we took students from all over the area, and they had to go through the process and all of that, and there were certain HR departments that we struggled with, and then one of the things that was a real big struggle for us as well, interviews, and I walked, I just pushed away from the table one day, I was like, we gotta get interviews and resumes back into the, somewhere, sneak those back in somehow.
So I will say with, with internships that we're offering here for the district, we had them do interviews, and some of them also had to submit a resume, so we're working on that, and our college and career counselors, that's something that we're also working with through them, and Lauren Fletcher as well, through HDL University, is mock interviews, so it's on our radar.
Can we count that as unstructured physical activity time?
Dr. Byrd, I have a question, do we have a number of those graduates, do we have a number, percentage of what's, who's going to college, and who's straight going to straight, you know, trade school, or who's going straight into the field of, you know, of working or anything?
We don't right now.
Okay.
No, that, that information is collected later, but not right now.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
It's good stuff.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Byrd.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fields, operations report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, I only have a couple items for tonight. I want to commend our nutrition department, our summer feeding program serves breakfast and lunch at several locations. Summer feeding starts June 2nd, breakfast and lunch has been provided at all of our schools in the district, at the Boys and Girls Club, Luntford Methodist Preschool, and the Hunger Stop Bus. As of today, Thursday, June 12th, nine days total, we have provided, provided over 8,900 meals for breakfast, and over 2,500 meals for lunch, for a total of approximately 19,400 meals, I think that's a pretty good job. The last thing I'm happy to announce is, Dr. Combs, Mr. Blake, is we now have 100 out of district applications, so it's constantly growing every day.
Cool, great.
Any questions?
Question, Ms. Fields? Thank you, Ms. Fields, I appreciate it, thank you. Commissioner Bennett, capital projects report.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
I will bring you to the, here we go. So, construction side, that everybody's getting excited about coming to, coming to an end, towards the end of the year, so we're in the sixth month, and if we stay on track, guys, we got six more, and we're gonna get to start, start tearing down our temporary school that has been a challenge to say the least, but I do encourage you guys to drive by, and if you, you know, like I told you before, if you miss a week, you've missed a lot. Recently, I got, got Mr. Ron Spleen, our senior project manager, on site to give me some, just give me some percentages and whatnot on where we stand, if you walk through the middle school, you're pretty much ready to start practicing basketball, if you will, the goals are currently up, the gyms, painting, they're in there currently, now the graphics, if you will, are on the wall, but the final code on the wall of the color, the base colors there, they're cleaning the floor, getting ready to bring the hardwood in. So, very excited. The first, the first shot that you're looking at here, this one here, this is coming from the east side of the, of the campus, and by Friday, by Friday morning, where you see that we don't have the roofing here, it'll all be on site, so the gymnasium here, and this little bit up there, roofing process takes, they've gotta have at least two full days, two dry days in order for this, for the roofing.
That starts right there.
It's been quite a challenge to get to this, to get to this, so, but, I mean, you wouldn't know it by the, by the work that's going on, just on whether you do have a roof, I mean, they've got, they've got rooftops live, they've got permanent power running live, they're in the process of pulling off temporary power, and, you know, going full, turning the permanent power on. The brick in the courtyard is currently going on, on the elementary side, all of our structural walls are finished in the school, roofing is 80% complete, we've got two brick crews working, but we're still waiting on our final batch, our final delivery of brick, which is scheduled for the 23rd, and when that delivery shows up, then they're gonna add another brick crew, another brick crew to the, to the site in order to, to expedite that as well. You'll ride along the highway, riding right along the drive in front of the schools, today you'll notice they've started putting down sock. Again, a lot of these things are really starting, you know, really bringing it all together, that we, that there is, there is hope here to get in here. Like I said, the gyms are being cleaned, we get ready for the wood, painting continues in the middle school, they've started, they've started up several of the RTUs, which is your rooftop units, and that's allowing them to remove the temporary dehumidification, which is critical whenever you're in there painting walls, pulling the moisture out so it can go, so you can get a good bond. Paint crews are going to six day, they're moving to a six day schedule, just starting this week, they'll start putting the block filler on the elementary side, the roughing, the mechanical roughing started in the areas E, B, and C, and the framing, and the drywall is actually getting ready to start into the admin office, the framing leaving into middle school admin, and I'm gonna say it's by 75% of the elementary side, starting for the admin offices. We've got the epoxy floors in the bathrooms, they're starting on the 16th, all of our plumbing fixtures are expected to come in on the 18th. The permanent power, as I can mention, is on, it's, permanent power is on, and the electricians prepare for the generators and getting light fire, so I'm quoting here, if you will, with what Mr. Ron Spleen had provided for us, and guys, I was at, I was at the trades meeting this morning, and the, it's impressive to see a group of men, I mean, they're pretty, pretty, just intense, you know, crew that's in there, I mean, they're, they're making sure that they hear us loudly in the community, that we've gotta get these kids in these schools, they understand the challenge, they understand the feat, they understand what we as a, as a school district have had to weather and battle through over the last two years, and so, it's not just another job to, to these guys, I mean, several of them are local, you know, not everyone, they're not all coming from Shelby County, we've got a lot of Tipton County representation there on the job site, so, it's a little different than just building another project for some of them, so. We are wrapping up some other capital projects on the, that we've had this year, towards to the tail end of our fiscal year, tightening up some screws, and then July 1, we'll break, you know, we'll break through, break open with some, with some other ones, you've noticed that Wrighton Elementary, they got new striping, they, that looks much better and much needed. You're gonna see some on the Luntford area that'll start taking place actually next week, he had to pull, he had to go knock out a apartment complex, and then he's coming right back to us to take care of Luntford High School, Luntford Elementary, and as well as Luntford Middle, so all three of those areas will see striping as well, apartment lots, so. The softball field there, I've spoken with that contractor, I'm expecting the metal on that dugouts, that's your softball dugout, I'm expecting that to get wrapped up before the 30th is over, I was expecting it before this meeting, but I was assured that I wouldn't have to carry anything over to July 1, so, send you back door, so, I'll keep you abreast. Well, look, it's, it's turned out to be a nice project, and they've done a very nice job inside the locker room, where the, where the boosters went in and built some, built some lockers for them, looked very nice, very, very capable, so.
What about the, what about the sink all at the high school football?
We got that addressed. Over there by the concession stand, yeah, so we had a group, we had a guy come in that's very familiar with storm drainings, I had, we, with our equipment, we were able to, we were able to dig it out, where he could get in there and really evaluate it, and they, they went in and put a clamp, and they clamped it, and we got it put back together, and it's, the fence is removed, it's, that, that issue is resolved.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank y'all, yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions?
What was going on at Drummond, I think they, oh, service trucks the other day, looked like they had a, the whole company.
Was it, was it, was it today, earlier?
It was last week, first of week, last week, it was.
That's that group that, Cintex or Cintaget, something, they came up there to help paint, help Shelley paint, wasn't that that group?
It was, like every service truck.
Remember that day, we had a full crew there taking care of ground, was spreading fall protection in the playground areas, and so, and then we've got a, the lagoon, the silver lagoon that we've got in the county, we've got a new baffle that's being installed down there next Friday, so that's one of those state compliance situations, we've had to go in agreement, some, some stuff there, so, but to answer your question, I'll, I'll crown back and see exactly, I know Shelley, she's pretty aggressive, she doesn't, she doesn't sit still well.
I do think that's what that was, I think she had a group that was represented from a bunch of different folks that came in and did some painting for her, some stuff like that, were coming in to volunteer that work, and I think that's a lot of it, because I think that was a project request that we got, that they said they'd supply.
But I didn't have an exact date, I do, I don't remember there being.
Right, I'm just guessing, that might have been it.
And one day I drove by, and it was service truck, service truck, and it was all from the same company I was going, ooh, something big going on, kind of stopped, school was going on, it kind of stopped, so, yeah.
I think that's what it was.
Any other questions?
I'll get you any problems up there the other day.
I did not, as a matter of fact, that one was pretty smooth, my crew came up, and we had, like on his name right now, Justin, from, from Sidney, Luntford, he came over, very, very, you know, knowledgeable there, and we got, we did get the irrigation running on for the, for the band practice field, not that they need it, but they do have it active, and it is ready whenever we do get a dry spell, we can keep, we can keep a march.
I don't think we've had to worry about that for a while.
So, it was pretty simple, I mean, we did, we installed the back plug, got everything, we didn't have any, there might be something, but we ran it long enough that I would have thought that we would have seen any kind of, you know, pipes busted or had that need to be replaced, but, pretty smooth, thank you for taking a call and answering, I was able to walk right to that valve you were talking about, yeah, so.
So, Mr. Edwards?
Billy just sent me this, Roger Henderson put something on Facebook, said I'm part of the best team in the world, today more than 30 colleagues from Convergent showed up to Drummond Elementary School to put up, to put up cameras, replace TVs, paint, pressure wash bathrooms, and do landscaping, thanks to Shelley Golden Goth and team for letting us serve their school, so that's, that's who it was, we just didn't know the date they were showing.
Yeah, I knew that they had to be grudged, but I didn't know the exact date. And doesn't surprise me that she got it early on in the summer either. Not at all. Thank you, guys.
Commissioner Doherty, financial report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The, unlike most people, I don't have a lot of information tonight, thank the board, right, we're trying to wrap up the fiscal year '25, and certainly are working on fiscal year '26, do want to take a moment to say thank you to all of you for your attendance at the county finance meetings, the county commission meetings, as we go up and present, it's been very beneficial for us, and I think for the district as a whole. I want to call your attention to the packet with the financial reports for revenue and expenditures, I'm sure most of you noticed, in, excuse me, in reviewing the reports, there's no 46, 510 revenue, no TISA payment in the month of May, right? But you notice our cash flow received a healthy bump there with that insurance, that 11 million insurance payment that we had, discussed and are aware of, and so we're sustained through this period of time, and I feel good about where we are currently with the cash flow forecast for the construction project, and where we are as far as in June, you know, we'll get our 75% TISA partial payment, and then we'll get our true-up payment in July to finish this off, and so I feel good about that, I feel really good about the main numbers on the TISA report, but that is, your revenues and expenditures are included in your packet for the 141 General Department of School Fund, the 142 School Federal Projects Fund, the 143 Central Cafeteria Fund, and the 177 Education Capital Projects Fund, all included inside the packet there. I do want to let you know, obviously, you know, we presented our budget to the county finance committee on June 3, they took it under advisement, as is normal, they're hearing a budget, another budget presentation tonight, I received unofficial information that the county commission is scheduled, they're gonna move the July meeting to the 3rd Monday, and will be voting on our budget, and the county's budget, that 3rd Monday of July, so I anticipate our budgets being passed, I think it's, I'm gonna say that's the 17th, but I could be wrong, maybe it's 21st, anyway, it's the 3rd Monday in July, I'll bring you back more information, if I hear something, I'll send you out information, but that is what I understand at the moment.
The 21st?
The 21st, is that the 3rd Monday?
The 3rd Monday?
Mm-hmm, that's when I was told that they were moving the meeting forward to allow for everything.
21st.
The 21st, that's gonna allow them to send out to all the members to review before voting on the budget finally, so. And I want to say tonight is their last scheduled finance hearing for the county this year, unless they have something come up, of course, so, Mr. Chairman concludes my report, unless there be any questions for tonight.
Any questions? Chief, when do we expect Linkus to get us our next payout?
So, actually, it came today, so we'll be, it is our largest payment to date, typically made around the 15th, the estimate, and I just want to give a shout out to Linkus because their CFO and project team worked with us to get us a preliminary estimate on the June payout, obviously, taking into account the significance at the end of our fiscal year, making sure we had the money to pay everything, they got us that information, as you own it, as a way we were prepared for that, and it is going to be our largest payout to date, over $6.1 million for the month of May, and of course, $323,000 retainage, in addition to that, will be withheld 5% as required by statute, so, looking good so far.
And that one will be sent straight to insurance for reimbursement, is that correct?
So that actually is gonna come out of that $11 million payment that we received last month, and of course, as, as noted probably in your question, part, part of that 11 million was for content, so it's not a full 11 million towards construction cost, I anticipate that we're going to need, depending on where the payout comes in, in July, I anticipate we're gonna be sending a partial request to insurance, because we have, we'll have a small balance left for insurance recovery funds that we currently have, except aside of the committed fund balance for next fiscal year, but I'm pretty sure, if not by July, unless they send us another check in September, we'll be asking for money from the insurance reimbursement.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Speaking of contents, what do we have on contents?
So, we recently got information from A2H, that number looked like, what was it, was it like 2.6 was the number that they gave, like the furniture inventory and all that stuff they gave us, looks like about 2.6, that does not obviously include playground equipment, because playground equipment is all included in the GMP, so that's part of the bill, right? But the contents number looks like about, that's, that's supposed to include library books, office furniture, classroom furniture, all that kind of stuff, but that is not a final number from our furniture vendors yet, but it's close, and if, if that ends up being the number, we're, okay, yeah, we're good, I mean, you know, we can, we're, we're good, but, we're, you know, cautiously optimistic that that is the, that's the number, we're not, you know, we didn't get the top of the line, we tried to hit somewhere in the middle, but it's nice, it's, it's nice, so, yeah.
Four-year-old.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? Dr. Combs, you have anything?
Uh, no, sir.
Board, we have two members of our community tonight who want to speak, first up is Charlotte Wall, okay, Charlotte, you want to come up and address the board tonight? You want to, you want to center?
I'm gonna center you up a little bit, so.
That cool?
Good.
Oops, sorry.
Good. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me a small amount of time in front of you tonight. I'd like to begin before we jump into this topic, I thank the Chairman Blake Schenkel and the Tipton County School Board for their time and dedication to show daily to Tipton County its future by occupying the seat you're in tonight. It's no small feat and not to go unnoticed for the time, attention, and effort that goes into that seat every day. I take it to mean that you care enough about our future, the kids of today and leaders of tomorrow, to get involved and do what you can to make a difference, no matter how big or small. Thank you to Dr. Combs and his leadership during his tenure. There is no better person to deal with pandemics, deaths, widespread destruction and devastation in the aftermath and the children and families of Covington are still actively dealing with to the state. We're merely scratching the surface of what he's done and what he's had to deal, to deal with, uh, for the school system, but no one can deny that he had to live on the front. Um, while maintaining high character and ethics at any work, wherever I'm going, I'm truly proud to have, I'm truly proud to have my three sons under your leadership and guidance during the rebuild of Covington Elementary and Middle School.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the temporary buildings have not been ideal, but neither was the tornado that ripped the county in half. I have full faith in you, Tipton County Schools, to overcome and continue to overcome any obstacle, local or not, that gets thrown your way and gets the kids back in the school building. Now I'd like to shift gears and get into the meat of the matter in a while here. My name is Logan Walz. For those who have not met me here in the building or, uh, on YouTube watching, I'm a lifelong resident of Covington and Tipton County. I'm one hundred percent fully invested in the success and continued prominence of the Tipton County school system. All three of my boys have been enrolled in the pre-K program at, um, Austin P and their, I mean, I've had Ms. Kelly, uh, Chris Fewe all the way through. One's got cut out for COVID, one got cut out for the tornado and the baby finally got to graduate this year without any problems. They're even in the temporary school, so. I'll give you all this background just for context of how deeply invested I am in Covington and Tipton County. I left a corporate job twelve years, that I was at for twelve years, um, to come back and run a small business here in, in the community. And I, I love it that much and cared about it that much. I'm a two thousand nine graduate of Covington High School and the acting president of the Covington Gridiron Association beginning in twenty twenty. Uh, this place and this community mean something to me. It's no secret or surprise to anyone that's been following along the last few years at the actions of Mumford High School and the blatant and obvious recruiting that has taken place. Let me be clear, I'm one hundred percent for open enrollment of our school system. As a fierce competitor myself, I'm one hundred percent for finding any competitive advantage that you can. Open enrollment can be a huge benefit to our county that we all live in, that we pay our taxes to, where we shop at locally, hate ads, make these, I mean, all locally, small, uh, small businesses around. However, I'm vehemently against and cannot stand by and watch quietly while one group targets children who can run, jump, lock and throw to benefit adult egos. It's no secret that Coach Kirby accepted the head coaching job at Ender County in January of twenty twenty-five and submitted his resignation on January twenty-fourth, leaving Covington without a head coach in charge of the program under a first-year principal, Ms. Blam. It is undisputed fact that Coach Calhoun directly contacted Covington High School players via text message within the same school week that Coach Kirby announced his resignation. A direct and clear violation of Article Two, Section Eighteen of the T double S double A bylaws. It is undisputed fact that Covington students were checked out of school to date, uh, to meet with Courtney P., Slade Calhoun, Mike Huffman, and football players on campus Thursday, January thirtieth, six days after Coach Kirby submitted his resignation. School records and camera footage are well documented and available, uh, through the school at the board's request. It is undisclosed and undisputed fact that Mumford High School was found in violation of Article Two, Section Seventeen of the T double S double A bylaws for recruiting via social media, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Mumford High School and Football Program was found in violation again by T double S double A and was placed on athletic probation, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, with the ruling coming merely ten months after their prior offense for the same violation. I don't want to get up here and sling mud to air out all the direct and factual evidence of the continual violations that are happening to the state between Brighton and Mumford, not only pushing the boundaries because, hey, what's going to happen? We have to deal with the governing body that who's at turmoil with the state, much less, uh, who controls and rules over fourteen to eighteen-year-old kids. I stand before you tonight on behalf of Tipton County, we're better than that. Who would want to move here? I mean, Dr. Fields said earlier, it's about a hundred out of, what is it, out of state or out of county? I mean, what would it be if one leg of the pyramid wouldn't bash into the other ones with constant, you know? Who would really believe that our school system, the school system that I've got, two of my kids here tonight? The one that I want to put them in. I mean, would openly allow one of the schools to offer rides, money, housing, jobs at McDonald's and false promises to children just to scratch the surface. It's hard to deny that it's been done behind closed doors in the football office. I would be considered an incompetent businessman if I did not know what was going on across the parking lot in my shop, if I was not keeping my finger on the wants and needs of employees to make their job easier. Covington High School has since recanted its football contract with Mumford, who has since been undeniably found guilty of recruiting and in violation by the governing body of high school athletics. High School, Covington High School chose to take a stand for what is right, regardless of the outcome, or if they would be standing alone. And for that, I'm proud of my alma mater and the leadership in the building. T double S double A has set the precedent with these two rulings in ten months on how far a school is allowed to stray within their bylaws with minimal punishment. The same bylaws that are set, set up to punish ineligible, ineligible children with a twelve-month ban on athletic involvement, but no repercussions for the adults who entice kids to give up one of their four short years of eligibility to play high school sports. If Tipton County school system wants to set that same precedent of what is acceptable behavior, what is allowed and just how far we can collectively stretch out the out-of-bounds line so beaten, I can live with that. That's how much faith I have in Dr. Combs, the school board and the school system. But let it be known, Covington is watching, West Tennessee is watching, Melrose is watching. It's not that Covington can't provide housing, jobs, rides, income for players and family, but we choose not to. Covington chooses to win through work ethic, work effort, development and accountability. To win with the players who get off on the bus, to win with the kids who they believe in, the kids who are enough if they show up and put in the work. What message does that send to local Tipton County talent if they're constantly being replaced from outsiders? T double S double A can easily throw Melrose to the wolves we saw last week without second thought. I'll leave you to ask and ponder, why do you think that is? Is it because they're inner cities with Memphis schools? Or is it possibly there are deeper ties and connections at play that are eluding the ones that are not looking? I'm not saying I have the answers per se, but they're out there for those willing to dig through the social and political landscape to uncover the truth. I appreciate your time tonight and I encourage you to do your own research, take out any and all bias and ask the hard questions about what's been going on. What's currently going on at Brighton and how many starting seniors have transferred to Mumford within the last week? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, McWalz. I do, I do want to kind of set the, or just at least say that I think as far as Tipton County schools concerned is, you know, our, we don't want to stretch the boundaries of anything, you know? I don't think, I think we want to be able to work within the boundaries that have been set by T double, T double S double A, whatever school that is. Um, unfortunately, T double S double A, um, you know, they operate, they, they are the governing body over all the, um, courts. And so that kind of makes it a little bit harder on us as a board, as a, as a, as a district to be able to do anything. In fact, I've been trying to rack my head around this, um, for quite some time, trying to figure this out. What type of teeth do we have when it comes to any type of recruiting or probation or, uh, violations from T double S double A? And, and, and so my question to Dr. Combs, based off of, of, you know, the packet here and, and, and what happened at the moment and what's happened elsewhere in, in other schools is, what does it mean by probation? We know what it means by probation. When T double S double A says, hey, you're on probation, you've, you've violated this, do we have an answer to that?
That's a great question. Number one, I'm, uh, I know it's, it's no secret, I'm not a huge fan of T double S double A, but I, I will say this. Um, probation status based on, this comes straight from the director of T double S double A today. Probation status just means we're watching. That, that, that's what that means. So that they can say, if something else happens during this probationary period, which is a year, that they will enact deeper and further consequences should that be found in their house. Now, again, if I may, let me extend that just a little bit to say this. Their end lies part of the problem. They're the governing body over athletics in the state of Tennessee. So they make the rules and then they enforce their own rules and then they get to decide on who is violating the rules and who hasn't. If you look in the sixty-two page bylaws of the T double S double A, which if, you know, you need to help fall asleep at night, read those. Um, when you read through those, the, the portion that, that Logan, that, uh, Logan talked about, um, on, on recruiting, it never brings up the board nor the superintendent at all. In all sixty-something pages, it doesn't talk about us at all. It talks about the relationship between the T double S double A governing body and the school, and the, uh, school, right? The, the administration and the coaching staff at the school. It leaves absolutely no teeth for these nine board members, nor me, to do anything to it unless we enact something on our own. Now, y'all, um, were very proactive in March?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Uh, our, our policy on interscholastic, uh, athletics, four point three oh one, I believe, uh, policy guru. I don't know if that's the right, is that right? I can't believe I got it right. Four, oh, there you go, four point three oh one. Um, we added that piece in there. Line seventeen, all communications between T double S double A and TCS schools that involve disciplinary actions, contest, infractions, scheduling changes, or similar matters shall immediately be submitted to the district athletic director, that would be Mr. Fields. Contracts made between TCS schools regarding athletics or athletic scheduling require the district athletic director's approval. Now, you put that in in March twenty twenty-five, which lends itself to us being able to make some of those things a little more actionable. Thank you, from this point moving forward. Before, let's say that there was an infraction at Brighton High School, right? And T double S double A called them and said, hey, look, you did this wrong, you're in trouble for this, this is your action. I might not even know that. Until you had put that in there, they are not required to tell me. Let me ask you something. If you have a kid that runs into the store and steals a candy bar and the person there at security says, look, it's okay this time, don't worry about it, I won't tell your parents if you don't. Are they going to go tell their parents? Probably not. The school that is in trouble or gets a consequence from T double S double A is not even required to report that to me or report it to you. And so that is why we enacted that piece in the policy. That's going to be, uh, even the T double S double A director today said, that was very forward-thinking, good job. He commended y'all for doing that because most don't have that. Um, we have to have more teeth into that. So I know I went a long way around that answer, but probation on their behalf means we're going to be watching what you're doing. If you violate this section again, there would be, or there could be further consequences from T double S double A. And that's what that means.
So on the heels of that, it, it's clear as mud regarding probation, because I'm reading this, it doesn't give me other than a monetary fines. We don't even know what probation means.
Five hundred dollars, yeah.
Yeah, so I, my question to you is, as a board, since we don't, it seems like we don't even have control over this process or even, even say, even in the district, is, is, um, as, as light as that was, which is fine, that's, that was their finding. What if something more detrimental comes out toward a school, you know, that's, you know, such as Melrose, where they lost, you know, games, had forfeit these things, you know, recruiting rules and stuff like that? But, I mean, can we not look into policies, whatever, that we can do to enact to try to get more teeth into that? A little bit more control over that process? Is that something that we can, you and Mr. Fields or something, we can look at? I mean, because I feel like at this point, we don't have any say as a district, other than it just goes back to the high school.
With, with this board's direction, uh, I would love to have a little bit of time for, to be able to get with Mr. Fields and we sit down and try to see what kind of teeth we can put into it from a, a district, a, a district administration standpoint to see what we can do to combat some of that. Because basically, it's like, these two folks over here playing in the sandbox and we're not included, but, uh, y'all are their boss. Right? So, I mean, just like when I, when I came to y'all with the, uh, uh, the social media piece that, uh, Logan mentioned, I didn't even know about that. I had no idea. That, what, what did we get that? What did we find out about that? Ten months after it happened, something like that? I didn't even know that happened. But that's because they don't have to tell me, right? They do now. That's why we know some of the stuff we know now, because of that policy change. So more than likely, it would be something enacted in a procedure or something like that that we could look at and then bring before y'all and see what you think. But absolutely, to use your term, we can bird dog that, Chairman, and we'll get you an answer.
I mean, do y'all agree? I mean, I, I, all I'm asking is, is that we, we get approached by, you know, with the board, we get the questions from constituents and stuff, but yet we don't know, we don't have, we don't know anything.
I, I, I'm, I'm just going to fight me out and devil advocate. I didn't know we were going to have this discussion on the parent, whoever that was that we're coming up with. But anyway, that's great that we're doing that. Uh, that packet, that's the first time I've seen any of that. And so it's hard for me to weigh in on it.
Some of that you saw, because I sent it to you in an email.
I read the TSA, that's correct, but all these emails and pictures that you guys sent in this packet, this is the first time I've seen that.
You don't have to see it. It goes straight to T double S double A.
Understand, but y'all are sitting, the two of you are sitting here deliberating right now and we need more teeth and stuff. And I'm like, what do we need teeth for? I, I didn't know that nothing was wrong, because I read the TSA report and it said probation. So that's where I'm, I'm sitting here going, well, this might be a little bigger than what I think. So what I'm saying is, I don't have enough information to weigh in on, on any of this right now.
I don't have any, I don't have any, it's the first time I've seen it as well. I don't, I, I've not been presented other thing, any other than what you've been presented as well. But what I'm getting at is, I read that and I read the report that we were given and, and I, I don't know what probation means.
So do we need, is there? From the TSA findings, the two of y'all, if you've been speaking on it quite a bit, are y'all, is there a big issue here? That I'm, I haven't read through all this yet.
You just heard him. You think there's a big issue?
I understand. I hear it from a lot of parents, too.
Yeah, there's a big issue. My, my, my thing is this. The issue like that Logan's talked about and we've talked about before is that y'all have zero control over it. So they gave you, T double S double A, the letter that I sent you, that they were sent there, right? There was a finding. They found them guilty of, and that was the consequence they gave. Got it, right? They made the rules, they found the consequence. That's not the question. It was a text.
Text.
Coach was texting a child, a, a kid at another school. That was the, that was the finding. Now, there were, there were multiple allegations, but that's the one that they said they were in agreement with, T double S double A, that was a violation. That's what they said. And so it was a text between the coach and a student from another school, giving them information about what they would do if they came to that school. That, that's in that.
My deliberation has had nothing to do with what even Mr. Logan, Mr. Walz, you presented is. My deliberation or my, my question is, is, I don't care who it is, is it seems that we're left out of the process.
That's my.
That's what I'm getting at.
No, and I think that's where I was going too, because I didn't know anything about the investigation. And that's a true story. When I asked you about it, because there was some little chatter going on, you were like, I can't talk about it. That was, both of y'all were there when I asked you all that, because I heard about it. And so now it's like, we're being faced with it tonight, and I agree, we should have known more. I could actually have an intelligent conversation right now if I'd known about the text.
Well, part of it is, we knew that there was something sent in, but we hadn't gotten a response back from T double S double A, so there wasn't anything to talk about. We don't know. I mean, it was sent to T double S double A and they make the ruling. So, I mean, we don't know.
Do we want to?
Never seen these texts.
Get off into that?
Wow.
Do what now?
Do we want to get off into that?
Absolutely. I mean, there's, I think all of us have a, have a job. I know with, with my job, there's, there's federal laws that I can violate that would put me in a situation, but because there's policies with my company involved, they have a right, if I violate a certain law, they can reprimand me as far as suspensions or termination. Even though the laws don't pertain, it's, the policy says, well, if you do this, we can do this. Why wouldn't we?
Why wouldn't we, why, why shouldn't we have teeth in the, in, in the whole spectrum of, like you said, these are our employees?
I think where I was aiming was.
We need to have that, that, that room to discipline if they might get a rule.
Dr. Fields and Dr. Combs, your employees, full oversight to discipline, do what you want to. I'm just saying as a board member, unless I were brought into the investigation and given all the facts, I wouldn't feel comfortable deliberating, if that makes sense.
No, I got you. You.
I would trust in the two of you to go through the process and do your job. I'm gonna.
Y'all would deliberate if there was an appeal to you. I mean, that, that's not it. The thing is that we're not communicated with on this. I think that's the biggest piece.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I'm not asking to deliberate anything, but when I have a constituent come up to me and I know in actively or, or whatever in our community and we have a, we have a violation against a, you know, a school or whatever and I can't give an answer and I don't know, and, and then when I come to the district and say, hey, what is it that we can do? I mean, they don't know, they don't have a clue. And so I think that's a, that's a problem that I see in T double S double A. And that's all I mean. It's not saying that, we're not the judge, juror and executioner here is, is, but, but I think the superintendent should, if he gets this on his desk, he ought to be able to have a little bit more information on this, in my opinion. And it's not that, from what I can gather, he doesn't have that.
From the beginning, nothing.
Do what?
From the beginning, nothing.
Yeah, exactly. That's where I'm, that's where I'm looking, you know?
And I, I can't even sit here and say that I would have done something different. I don't know. I wasn't part of the investiga, I have no idea, right? But I know this. I know that, um, until y'all put that in there, I wouldn't even have been, this whole thing could have happened and never been brought to my attention. Because T double S double A guidelines don't say they have to. The agreements between the entity and the school.
I'm seeing, and the same thing with contracts.
Same thing with contracts.
Discussion about contracts.
Same thing with contracts.
So, and, and again, I'm just being the guy.
No, it's okay.
But if a parent brought, came forward to me and says, hey, this coach is texting my kid, do we throw up a brick wall and say, hey, call T S double A, we can't deal with that?
No, according to the bylaws, you're supposed to report it directly to the principal and then the principal can share that with T double S double A if they want to. You're not involved in it at all.
So it leaves the board out of the mix.
If they, well, if you read, in fact, it leaves the district, that's the problem. If you read the sentence, it says to avoid the appearance of impropriety, a coach who has contacted by any student, family or individual about attending the school or he or she is the coach and inform the person that he or she needs to contact the administration official or of the school. It has nothing to do with the district.
Nowhere in their bylaws do you see anything about the board or superintendent. It's all about the relationship between those two. So, I mean, again, it's not, you know, for y'all to stand up here and make those judgments or even me. It's that number one, we need to be communicated with and know what's going on in the process. You know, because at the end of the day, you know, they're my employees and I'm yours. So, you know, somebody's gonna answer to somebody. I guarantee you this, who's gonna get all the compliance calls? You and me.
We did.
You actually?
I did. Um, I think probably where, um, I don't know, I think there's some concern there because if it's just a slap on the wrist and, and not just about this, not what's sitting in front of us, just as a district, when we have something come up like that, now we are made aware of it. But if there's a slap on the wrist and it's probation only, I mean, when does it stop? When does the behavior stop if there's not going to be real action taken? That, that is a concern, you know? Does that behavior continue?
Yeah, I, I would agree. Whatever school, coach, whoever it is, I agree. All right, we should ask Johnson.
Y'all bear with me. My wife took my truck to Mississippi and my reader's were in it, so.
Do you need mine?
They got a two point, two point oh. I can't guarantee you mine is gonna be good.
Let me say too, I, when I asked to do this, Logan, I didn't know you were speaking and I think it's gonna go hand in hand, brother, I really do. So, um, let me start out. My name's Jason Johnson. I want to give a bit of background for those of you that didn't know me. I'm, I graduated from Mumford ninety-nine, participated in the football and baseball programs during that time and I was fortunate to have the opportunity to extend my athletic career to the collegiate level. After college, I returned to Mumford and was hired as a teacher and a coach and had the privilege to be a part of the football, basketball, baseball and golf programs during my eight-year career. After leaving the education profession, I was able to continue to volunteer as a football and baseball coach at Mumford Middle School for an additional three years. I come before this board today to address the current situation going on between Mumford and Covington Athletic Department. And I have also heard that this situation may be bleeding into Brighton as well. It has come to my attention that these athletic departments, Mumford and Covington, have made the decision not to schedule any athletic events, contests with each other moving forward. I'm not here to speak on the reasons for these decisions. I'm sure all parties involved have self-justified reasons for what they're doing and it is not my place to place judgment on those reasons. I'm strictly here to speak on the consequences of those decisions and to make sure the parties involved have thought to put what is best for the student athlete first in their decision-making process. Sometimes we adults can forget when trying to prove a point or win an argument that we are around these programs for twenty to thirty years. These students have four to make memories that will last them a lifetime. Every person in this, in this room that participated in Tipton County Athletics and even some that didn't have memories of competing against other Tipton County schools that are some of the best memories of their youth and some of the best stories we get to share as adults. Even so, I, I fought real hard not to put my story in this, in this speech, but I didn't figure you guys need to hear it. So we are, uh, we are depriving our current Tipton County student athletes of the opportunity to create these memories. And I hope we can step back and ask ourselves if this is the correct course of action for these students. Like I mentioned, I'm sure all parties involved have very justified reasons that they have led them, that have led them to make the extreme decision not to schedule these sporting events. But I challenge, wouldn't it be better to address and try to come, to come to some type of agreement on those reasons instead of allowing the situation to grow to this catastrophic level? Truthfully, I'm not even sure who I'm addressing this plea to. I don't know who could or would be the correct person, a group of people that would be able to make, take any action to solve these problems. All I know is my oldest son has thirty more years of high school athletics. And I don't think it's fair that he misses out on the opportunity to compete against some of the fellow student athletes at other Tipton County schools that he's grown up playing against. These student athletes are friends and relatives with each other that have grown up together. But if no solution is found to resolve the current situation, we are depriving them of the chance to make the memories, the same memories that some of us hold so dear in our high school experiences. I implore us adults to stop being adults for one minute and to think of athletics as we did when we were young. Sports were something we enjoyed. It taught us valuable lessons that we have carried with us throughout our lives. Lessons like hard work, self-sacrifice for the greater good, overcoming adversity, and most importantly, to have fun. Seven percent of high school athletes go to college. That's not why most high school kids play sports. It's to, it's to enjoy it, to have fun and to learn those lessons. I pose this question. Have we lost sight of this? Because in my humble opinion, whatever lessons we're teaching our student athletes with our current behaviors do not measure up to the ones I previously stated. I cast this plea out to whoever is meant, is meant to hear it. Can we please get back to the student athletes being our first concern when making decisions? This boycott on scheduling sporting events by, is by no means, by only concern with Tipton County Schools focused on athletic department. Think we could do a lot better in a lot of different areas, but it is the one that pushed me to attempt to take action. I'm happy to volunteer my time and effort to help reach a conclusion on this issue. I'd also be more than happy to sit down with anybody that would like to, to try to discuss this further. But, but we can do better. I know we can. I thank you guys and God bless. Any question?
So I'm just gonna, just on the heels of what we already discussed, typically we don't deliberate on this stuff, but.
Thank you, sir.
Too many issues at night. We have some time tonight, but based off what I understand, again, you've heard us go around, we don't have much, we don't have much control over any of that, you know? And that's, it is kind of disheartening, you know, because.
Kidding though, or kidding you?
Well, I think that's something that has to, I think that's something that needs to be, um, looked into. However, Dr. Combs, stop me if I'm wrong, but it's, it's up to the principals. Is that correct?
Scheduling athletic contests is a function of the principal and the, and T double S double A. You know, there's even, I'll tell you this, I didn't even know, I saw my first contract not too long ago. I didn't even see those. And there's no signing between, like, you know, uh, there's, there's a, there's a fine, number one is a terrible contract. I mean, so, you know, that, that's one of them, but there's no, you know, there. So, I mean, definitely, I think that that can be something that we, that we look at. Because I'll tell you, the part I wrote down right here, are we depriving our kids because of adult egos? That's the question. That's, that's what I wrote down. Without Michaelias is all. But that, to me, that's the question. And so I, I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, and I, I just ask, I, I understand how the current situation is, but do we, is the current situation worked in the way, the best way it can? And I, I, I would say I don't think it is.
So Covington's not playing Mumford, huh?
In any sporting events.
Have you been able to speak with anybody at Mumford about anything or?
I haven't. I, I, um, couple of other, different issue that came up earlier in the year, I, I just didn't have much success with. So I, I thought this might be the best course of action on that, on this one.
Yeah, we'll follow up on that for sure. Uh, Dr. Combs, uh, as far as, yeah, it doesn't seem like we have any, anything that we can really add to that. And I think it's something we need to look at. Dr. Combs can ask T double S double A. But I think the, the, the priority from you is that's, I mean, I hear the heartfelt, I mean, I, I agree with you, you know? But I think that's gotta go probably before the principals, you know? I would think, you know, between all of them at this point, so, um, that's, I think that's where I'm at. Is it being the board? Y'all, seeing the district?
Are there any others that we've canceled district, the district or is that?
To my, to my dollars.
My understanding is, yes, that's my understanding. Again, I'm outside. I, I'm just hearing it through community and from family members and, and things that are, are in coaching. But my understanding is that those two, those two schools aren't playing each other.
I would guess with district shakeups too, that they don't have to play.
They do have to now, yes, yes.
Yeah, they're not, they're different, yeah.
There's a lot to have in like in-county rivalries and like you said, the relationship between different people on the team, you know?
I've coached, I've coached kids on all three of those high school teams.
Those are pretty big games.
I love to death and.
Let's be honest, it's a pretty busy.
But we can get that information.
Can you get some information for us on that?
I can.
And have it for our next workshop.
I'll have it for the next, thank you. Thank you very much.
Board, do we have any other questions or questions?
How does the new T double S double A rule?
Training rule? I mean, the one-time transfer rule? So we talked about that with, uh, Mark Reeves today as well. And, you know, he, James, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong on that. We're waiting to get something completely and totally written writing from him. He's gonna send us something. I think he's going on vacation, but he's gonna send us something when he gets back because even there were some questions we asked him that he could not answer. So, you know, part of that's gonna be, number one, both principals have to agree to it. They have to agree it's not just for the purposes of, like, I'm going there to play baseball, right? Yeah, there has, there has to be something else there and that's in, that's in the legislation or that's in the law. But they're gonna look at that and, and, and again, um, it doesn't, both, both principals have to agree to it and the burden of proof is going to be on the person who looks to me. That's what Mark told us today. And he did also say that, um, I'm gonna weigh into that. You know, my team gets to weigh into that. Because let's, let, let me give you an example. Let's just say, I want to go to this other school and I want to play baseball, right? But then they say, yes, there's something out there with it. Well, I want to play baseball, but it's really a social environment there. I've been bullied at school where I was. I want to go to this other school. Well, guess what John's gonna look into? Were you bullied at the other school? Because the other principal gets to weigh into that as well, right? So we're gonna look into that. You can't just make the, you know, you can't just make the claim and say, hey, here's it. I mean, and really, uh, but again, guess who all that is appealed to if they don't, if they don't like that? Correct.
So, Mr. Johnson, could we all, could we get with the principals or, I don't know, and kind of, you know, have a discussion?
We'll get the info.
About, yeah, like, you know, have Brighton included, Brighton's principal included and just.
We'll get the info and see that. And this, you know, this, this, uh, you know, one-time transfer deal is hot off the press, right? So there's stuff, that's why there are some things, you know, to his, you know, to, to his credit, to Mark's credit, there are some things that just have not happened yet. I mean, he's gotta see it. You know, some things have to happen for you can say, okay, ooh, didn't see that one, right? We have to make some, and that's just part of it. You know, when a new piece of legislation, I got two guys sitting back there in the back. I mean, good grief, we're hammered with new legislation every year, the school systems are, right? And so some of those things, you, you can ask me a question all day long and I'm, I don't know. I mean, I don't even know how that's supposed to happen. So we, we need to look at those first and then we'll be able to get, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see Mr. Fields and the principals and everybody just, you know, have a discussion about it and.
Right.
You know, it's like you said, it's the kids.
There's a, there's also a, a coaches and athletic directors orientation meeting at the beginning of every year. And I'm sure this will be a topic of discussion since this is the first year with that, you know, one-time transfer deal. I'm sure that's gonna be part of it, um, beyond what we've already shared. Yep.
Any other questions? I don't have anything else. I don't think anything else on the intended, if, if, if no other questions, we have a motion to adjourn. A motion, Mr. Edwards, you have a second. Same with Mr. Lavelle. Any other, any other question? All in all, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.